Hi, where are the relations to the flag of the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi Judy.
Hi Judy. I know, running around crazy.
So Judy, uh, two topics don't have an official agenda, huh? She the paper.
No, we never usually do.
Oh, don't we?
No.
Well.
Rage is gold.
Superb, let's stick with it. All right, I'm gonna look at last month's notes.
Okay.
And those of you that have them, should. Any corrections, additions?
I prefer Cheryl when you need her to check the punctuation on some of this.
I did that quietly. Cheryl, Judy.
Their ears will pick up.
We have a motion to accept these?
I'm moving.
A little second.
Two second, okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. That was easy. Um. Next, we were asked at the last town board meeting to review or to recommend to the town board the applicability of their amendment two of 2019, which the only feature of it is to increase the maximum height of wind turbines from 500 foot to 650 foot. I sent you all the law, the amendment.
Does it?
The secret. Yes, that is the, um, that's the amendment. Again, there's only one feature to it. Now Jeff Squires sent a copy to the county, and the county blessed it. Said it did not impact anything in the county's jurisdiction and the scope of work. What do we all think?
I think that who did all this? First of all, one was the town board, Tom, one had played the closing lead agency and did they notify everybody? Like the planning board, like the county, like.
And that's what you do?
Edson Market, the same thing we did last summer before.
Yeah, they have to send out a notice to declaring to be the lead agency.
So that's the first order?
Should go to the county, D E C, everybody.
Edson Market, if he has to vote, who knows, oldest of government agencies.
The D E C is that?
Any agency that might want to have something to say about it, you know, so be the county and.
So an amendment to a law can't just be forwarded or brought up by the town.
The amendment, I think, is one thing, but the environmental assessment is definitely somebody has to claim, put, declare to be the lead agent.
So the three parts.
So I don't like the amendment, just the, I think that's only the seeker you have to, somebody has to be the lead agency in that.
So does that feel not in the right place in the process?
Well, on that one, the copy that I had.
Right.
I think it should say down here, it states that the town is the lead agency.
I saw it.
And so I don't, as a planning board, I don't recall ever getting a notification of it. I don't know if Mark ever saw it or if you ever saw Judy, but I don't recall ever getting anything from them on it. But I don't know, maybe they sent it out and they just forgot off, I don't know.
Um, and the people on the board are savvy enough to know that process?
I don't know that they have been that involved in the seeker and stuff, so.
Cheryl.
But they're, you know, with a lawyer advising them, I would've thought that they would've gotten that kind of advice.
But is every lawyer cognizant of all?
I don't know.
You know, what's his wind experience?
I don't know.
I just say that because if you guys with tons of experience went here, I wouldn't know what order to put myself in, to put this board in.
So in the past though, the concerned, in this case it would be the windmill company, they usually make sure that all that stuff gets done properly. And in fact, on the one that we did for the existing project, they took care of mailing all that out. They did the county referral, they took care of all that stuff.
So they prepared the long form of the seeker?
Yeah, it was all with our, you know, on our approval.
We didn't do anything we didn't agree to or understand or.
That's how it was handled and that's, you know, part of the reason why we don't get our hands on that.
Yeah.
Part very often, but definitely it has to be done, it has to be mailed out. And then you wait for a response to see if anybody else has anything to say about wants to be the lead agency.
And that's a 30 day thing?
I think it is 30 days.
They got 30 days to respond.
What reason would they have to be lead agency? What reason would?
Somebody else?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's ever happened, to be honest with you. It would only have to be probably if there was another agency that, you know, had skills in the game that really was concerned and wanted to be part of it. But it's never happened in my, in the 10 years or so that I was on.
Always wondered, wondered that.
Typically everybody's like, well, you wanna do it, go ahead.
Actually, one time in Bradtsburg, the D E C did want to be the lead agency, yes, and that was like probably 20 years ago.
Yeah, I've never seen it, but doesn't mean that it wouldn't happen.
Okay, so there is a process that wasn't followed, illegal?
Yeah, I don't know, you know, she said she looked into it, I don't know. I don't believe that we ever got notified though, as a planning board.
As the planning board.
I don't believe so, no.
But we're at the pleasure of their use, right?
Yeah, I don't know that that issue is something that, you know, we can do anything about. I think, you know, they asked us for, to look at the amendment and the seeker.
Right, just now.
And give them our opinion on it, our comments is what they asked for, you know.
Just at the last board meeting, nothing before that. So it feels out of, out of order?
It does a little bit, I think they realized that the town board meeting, I don't know if none of you guys were there, but they were, they had scheduled the hearing for it and were planning on making a decision and I don't know. Somehow they realized that they had to refer it to us, you know, and so here we are.
So here we are.
Yeah, Timmy mentioned that at their special meeting there.
So I mean, that's, you know, here's a copy of the seeker filled out. You know, I had made a comment first time around, first time they talked about it.
But this would need to be.
The short form wasn't gonna suffice and so here's the long form.
But who did this? Not the board, because it's never been done at an open meeting, that was their first meeting.
Is this a public thing to do or is this?
It has to be done in public, like we do it in public, all this has to be done in an open meeting.
I've always done it at our meetings in the open forum, but I don't know, you know, if there's a reason why it couldn't be filled out ahead of time and then.
There's nothing, I mean, this is.
Groomed in a meeting, I don't know about that.
They have to discuss it in public.
They have to at least discuss it, I would agree with you there.
There are all facts on here, which no.
Because who did this? You know, do you know? Not the town board, I'm saying, because they haven't had a special meeting, they didn't do a last one.
But again, does it have to be done in?
Yes, it does.
That you're just.
Everything has to be done at an open meeting.
So at this point though, we're just reviewing and making comments on that.
I think of the comprehensive plan, I put together stuff at my house on, hey, here's how people voted for, they want a walking trail. Here's how people, you know, 13 out of 21 wanted a walking trail. I did all that stuff at my house.
Oh, your thing.
You know, data collection, to me it just looks like data collection. How many towns, what district towns, how many, how many people, it's just. I don't know. I just can't imagine, this would take like eight hours to sit around and chat about everyone's boxes.
The December, how many meetings did we have? And that's what we were doing, gathering information from them to prepare this. They prepared their section of it and we did our section.
Bella filled out the E A F for us though, and we reviewed and approved it. So I mean, it's not unheard of, I don't think, for somebody else to fill it out and then be approved by the town board, but.
But they didn't hire anyone and they haven't discussed it in a long time.
But someone with knowledge could've filled this out and said, you know, take a look at this, I believe it's true, correct?
Well then, I'm just gonna raise the one other problem that I have, that I think is a huge problem. They're basically saying that they're changing the law and only one section of the law for bear winds. That's not legal to do, that's, you can't change the law for a particular or specific party. That would be, you would ask for a variance, that would be a variance to the law, not a change in the law. And that's what they're doing, and they're making that right here. So this opens itself up, to quote someone that somebody might not be kind of, really guessing for Article 78, which.
Is what, what's an Article 78?
That's what you file if zoning laws not being done correctly.
And then that would be arbit, arbitrage?
No, it would, it would again.
Yeah, that goes to court.
Okay. Um, because we, it was recommended to the town that we didn't do a variance, right?
They said they didn't want to. But that is what's supposed to be done, it's here.
They said that it hasn't been accepted, because I think I still have a copy of their reasoning behind their, the chip game.
Sorry, can I have a question?
Yes.
Is the, what you're referring to, where is that, where it says it's specific to bear winds? I thought this was for the law itself, not arbitrage.
Yeah, I didn't see the word bear.
Where is the bear winds project that's currently proposed to be located in the town? Has been issued a certificate of eligibility, blah, blah, blah. Where is the town zoning code, here's a high limit of 500 feet, and the town that hires some place that I own is a 650. Well, it shouldn't mention any specifics if you're changing laws for the betterment of the community, not for a specific party.
Well, it's on page two of part three of the form, two, page two, yeah, at the top of the table.
We just got these, so we can't look at them.
I sent these all PDF, everything you have printed, you have since, they're after the town authority.
Oh, these?
Yep, yep. They're ugly, tiny, they're, they're full of stuff I can't get my head around.
It also mentions in there.
For a novice, they're.
Determination of significance directly mentions the project, Bearin' Winds project, and the fact that there'd be less turbines. No, maybe it doesn't mention Bearin' Winds, but it talks about the fact that there would be less turbines. So I mean, it's talking about a project.
Yeah, I don't see it mentioning Bearin's.
I suppose it does.
Oh, here it is, you know, it's a few more.
It's on part three on page one with the reasons for supporting documentation. On part three, the actual form itself, on page two at the top, said Bearin' Winds on it also.
It's just a.
It's very specifically spelled Colorado Bearin.
You're saying it's not, uh, it's a word in my mouth, it's not beneficial.
It's called spot zoning, you cannot.
Spot zoning.
Right. And I'm not saying it can't be done, the law can't be changed, what I'm saying is that this process that they're doing right now is not, not the legal way to do it.
Yeah, it looks like the sighting board prefers the laws be changed because it's, it goes on.
Yeah.
As opposed to a flip in time. Is that, is that pretty much what I should have from that?
Yeah, they imply that it's been tried doing the variance thing and it wasn't acceptable.
But you have to exhaust all legal remedies and their first remedy is a variance, and they've not exhausted that for even five years.
In my opinion also is that if you're gonna consider an amendment to the law to go to 650 foot windmill, you also should have data backing up, you know, the statement that, especially in the E A F stating that, you know, there'd be no, no significant impact. You have no data to back any of it up, you don't know where any windmills would be, I don't know how you would consider this action if you're not considering this project. You're, you're saying it's okay to put a 650 foot windmill in with a project on the table proposing 650 foot windmills?
Yeah.
And you don't even know, you don't have a visual impact study, you don't have a.
It could be like.
You don't have a noise study, you don't have, they have it, I think, based on what the original project was proposed at.
Right.
For under 500 feet.
Under 500, right.
They have all that, but they need to provide.
Setbacks and roads.
They need to provide the difference between 500 and 650, they need to show some studies on that, in my opinion.
Sorry, can I speak to you again?
Yeah.
So that is all part of the process for the article ten? We can't enter that process of doing all those studies until we have the town law changed?
And.
So all the environmental impacts.
That's where the heartburn is, I think, is chicken or egg.
So you're saying we have to change the law first and then get information later? But when you change the law first and you can study, to study the environmental impacts, that's a part of the article ten process.
I don't think that's right. Windmill is okay.
Well, we didn't do that.
When you don't even know what the impact's.
Yeah, we have to study those.
Why would I say it's okay when I don't know whether it is or not?
Right, that's, that's why heartburn.
It doesn't give us the blanket approval to do everything, we still have to follow the state process, we still have all the.
What if, what if that all rolls through smoothly? What if everybody in a whirlwind signs off on it? And we're back here going, after the, the studies are done, oh shoot, you know.
Well, the process should follow the law to ensure that the environmental impacts are not significant.
Yeah, that's a should, that's not a black and white.
What else, what else could you do?
Article 10 considers our town's law.
I'm not aware.
Like, we just took one of those, like noise, right?
Yeah.
So noise impacts, you know, when we go ahead and study those, we would not expect the state to change the limitations that we already have in place with our current article ten. We would not expect to be able to exceed any of the noise limitations, any of the shadow.
Don't you think it's gonna go back and be re?
But you wanna exceed the.
Reintroduce against the Article 10 requirements? You think that's gonna happen?
We have to go and do all those studies again and put all those papers together for the state agencies to review, that we will not exceed the environmental impacts that we stated that we already would.
So I went and looked at some information online today about those 158 meter, is it the 4.8 or the 5.3?
So there's, I was telling Steve, there's, some of this is confidential, we haven't signed any agreement yet. We need to know for certain what the limitations are going to be. But essentially we have two turbines that we're looking at, that we're doing all of our analyses with those two turbines.
But the lowest number, the 4.8 of the 4.8.
4.2.
The 4.2 was 105 dB in calculated durability and I just have enough information to be scared.
Okay, so it is less than that? But what I'm saying before is that we had our Article 10 approved with conditions that we, there meeting. We do not expect the state to go say, you can go produce more sound now with this amendment. We expect all those conditions to be held in place with this process so that any limitations on noise, any limitations on shadow flicker, any limitations on avian or bat mortality, those are still gonna stay, that's what we're finding on.
There isn't one soul in this town that wants those lowered.
Right, we don't either.
You understand, right?
Yeah, I know that. And all those environmental impacts though are, are really not what this law considers, it's part of the whole process of the state.
Yeah, the law does consider it, because the town is responsible for the health and safety of its residents.
That's perfect.
That's the main function of the town board. And we can't say that a 650 foot structure, 750 feet from a property line is not detrimental to the health and safety of those people living there.
There aren't any.
Without studies.
In the state, there's only a few in the U S, correct me if I'm wrong, that are over that, that are at that elevation, that are at that height.
Yeah.
For lack of a better term, I think we're serial number one. Nobody wants to be serial number one.
So I think what I saw last week was I believe 40% of the turbine contracts signed last year were for turbines over 500 feet. So everything is changing, everything is getting a little bigger. And if you look at turbines from 10 years ago, they're definitely smaller than they are today.
Yeah, the ones in Howard are real short.
Yeah, and also, I was talking to Steve, a lot of this technology, it, everyone likes to say the technology's evolving and all these things are changing, but essentially it's still the same components, you have a gearbox, you have some blades, you have a generator.
And there's some elevation to capture, capture the dust wind.
And so, so, yeah, things are getting bigger. And so it is essentially the same technology, but in a bigger scale.
Yeah.
So we, all the turbines, the two that I'm looking, we're looking at right now, one of them has turbines like this already existing in the country. The other one does not, but the other one is a technology, a company that has.
Are these made in the US? Will these turbines be made in the US or don't you know?
So one of the turbine manufacturers manufactures most of their components in Colorado, and the other one kind of splits it all around, but has an office headquarters not very far from here.
But US also?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So turbines themselves, they have components that are made kind of on as needed basis around the world. They're so big that actually it makes sense to try to make them in the country or to be building, be using them. So they don't like to ship steel towers overseas.
Oh, I understand, yeah, I just didn't know if the General Electric's savvy about shipping stuff offshore or overseas to get the best bang for the buck. I wanted to just ask that question. The other issue, how about modularity or the ability to get these larger parts to the places that you wanna get them?
Right.
I mean, our current change road law, is that, is that applicable? Do we have to look at a new lighter road?
So it's totally logical to think that, and I thought that too. All the road radii, the radiuses that we've designed already, the maximum construction radius that we planned on was 150 foot diameter for the inside diameter, right? So that's a temporary impact. So when they build the project, they put these radiuses and radii in to transport all the components. These two larger turbines that we are looking at have the same turning radius. It really was a conservative design that was already shown and these ones are showing that we would need the same turning radius.
So if I look at the plot plan of Bearin' Winds to get to the proposed sites on the existing roads or the ones that were already widened for the current, what we have now, there isn't anything that's, I'd like to see that in writing.
Yeah, no, I.
That scares bail, I mean.
Same, yes, I know, I know. All those transportation studies, we would need to get to the town and each of the towns that participates and to be reviewed and, you know, to agree that the road improvements that we would propose are okay with the town.
Sure.
So.
There are proposed wind farms that are all specifying over the 500 feet to the 650 range, but there aren't currently any.
There are, there are others, if you want me to.
You mean in the state?
I don't know.
I cannot find.
Yeah, I don't know in the state.
I'm gonna say I put towers in.
I don't know, I know, so the Article 10 process is relatively new in the state, right? So we have two of the first three projects that have been approved in the article ten process.
Yeah, I understand that, there's the one, that's the Cal, the Calpine at Sanford.
There's Casadega, our other one.
Your other, right, at Casadega, the Calpine at Sanford Windsor.
Is that the Blue?
Bluestone.
Bluestone.
Yes, sir, and the Niagara.
Right, so.
Through the sighting.
I know, talking to other developers, I used to work in energy and I worked at Apex, but I've talked to some of my former colleagues and they are looking at similar turbines in the state of New York, so.
No 650.
Yes, the same exact turbines.
Not permitted though, right?
Nothing's been permitted, yeah, this is all, Article 10 process is sort of.
I tried to find, and there were no committed documents, that Bluestone project has all the documents available in PDF format. I could not find the Sanford or Windsor Town Law.
Okay.
That talks about, or the Casadega, Chautauqua County, Cataragis County.
Right.
Those towns, have they amended their laws?
That, that project is already starting construction, so we're not, we're using the old turbines.
That's right.
This is because of the delay with construction, all these, all these turbine companies are changing their technology. If you look at what GE offers two or three years from now, they're all, they're getting bigger, so they're doing away with smaller turbines.
Steve, you were gonna say.
I might have to show you something really quick. We started out, oh, let's see, this is the environmental impacts, they did it from 2006.
Okay.
And I just wanna show you what we started out with. If you look here, this is a Gamsa 2.0, that's what we started out with. And by the time the project started, right, it got a lot bigger and a lot noisier. And I want you to know that in the wintertime, right now, the Duesenberg Tower behind my house, 1,500 feet, right? When the blade goes by the tower, it sends out a low frequency pulse and I can feel it in my chest and my bed in the wintertime.
In your bed?
You're welcome to come and spend the night. Yeah, so, you know, when they say taller, they don't, you need to look at taller, but you also need to look at, you know, as far as the diameter of the tip of the blade.
Sure.
They fooled us the first time on that, they won't get us again.
It bothers me that we don't have a layout yet, and I know, again, it's the chicken and the egg. You can't get a layout till you know how many, how to get 175 megawatt out of it.
Right.
Bubba da bubba da bubba, you got this endless Mobius strip.
Yeah, changes are constantly happening right now, because we don't have the turbines selected, we need to know what limitations we currently will have with the towns. So this is one of those. I will say that all the variations of the layout that we are looking at are very, very similar to what was already permitted.
Have we seen a Bearin' Winds layout as our planning board?
The original.
The Article 10.
Okay, we saw an original one?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that, that was, the one that was approved by the Article 10 process, the September.
Oh, good.
That is public information. What we are looking at doing, and I think you guys have heard this, is a phased approach with the project.
Right.
The first phase, so basically breaking it up into two smaller projects, the first phase of which would be in Cohocton, Wayland and Dansville. And the, the project footprint of where all those turbines or the roads or the collection system would all go is very, very similar to where.
To the, to the original.
They're, so I think the current phase of this project, thirty-three turbines is what we're looking at building, okay?
In Coaxton, Wayland, Danzville?
That's correct.
Yes.
Coaxton has the majority of those right now. And out of all thirty-three of those turbines, only one has moved more than five hundred feet from its original proposed location that is in the public record from September.
Okay.
I can just give you, I think, but these are not moving all over the place. They're shifting because of the setbacks, taller height, you know, when we have certain setbacks in the town laws that require certain distances from property boundaries or houses, things like that.
Right.
Also noise setbacks, we will model everything to make sure that we adhere to the limitations that are currently in the Article Ten. So that's what we're all trying to design to.
Why is there more in Coaxton than anywhere else?
You say a good thing or a bad?
I'm just curious, you have other towns involved that don't even have windmills and yet, and we get more of them.
Is it because the wind does something special here?
It's closer to the substation and what's the deal?
Well, so I've been working on this project for about a year. So I know that the history of this project is, was that way before my time.
Well, the original meetings for the first year, we were getting no turbines. They were just hooking into the substation out around Hill. And then all of a sudden, we were getting twenty-some turbines. Then we were getting nineteen, then we were getting seventeen, now how many are we getting?
So right now, when I look at the overall map, and what I do is I tell our GIS guy, the mapping guy, you know, show me all the spaces of where we could put turbines on the land that we have signed, including the good maker agreements. So that creates like a suitable land layer that I can look at. And just Coaxton has the most.
My map is two.
There's most landowners that have signed. And the, you guys have great ridges, so those are where more wind is. So we don't want to put them in the valleys, we don't want to put them in the forests, we want to put them on cleared agricultural fields that are good flat areas to build on.
I spoke to Todd Martin in Wayland, he said, hey, they're only getting three on the outskirts of town in a very forested area.
From us?
Yeah.
Oh, no, we have more than three in Wayland.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, he believed it was three. He thought it was a formality that Wayland Town Board went through the planning board because they were only getting a sparse three.
Are you sure, sure not Danzville?
No, it's Todd Martin in Wayland.
Okay, Danzville had.
He was gonna try to come tonight, that's where I get the name, I thought, I thought you were Todd, Steve.
Sorry.
No, Wayland has.
I voted for three.
I understand. You're getting more than three, so maybe you should have come tonight and you could have worked with us future.
Yeah, I know they want more than that if they could, but unfortunately, that's with the land that we have signed up. That's the.
So the quantity increased and the height increased as far as the project?
No, the quantity decreased, the height increased.
So I thought we were only at twenty-something and now we're at thirty-something?
No, thirty-something's the whole project, including the other.
And he says the, in the Georgia art.
I believe it's nineteen in Coaxton, but let me, I know I wrote that down somewhere.
I'm a black and white guy, my name might be gray, but I'm black and white. I like to look at pictures when, I can't believe we can talk about this without a single layout on that table. It blows my mind.
Well, so the layout has changed this morning.
Well, I understand.
So I'm constantly, because one of the landowners is saying he's buying out his neighbor and so that might affect, so it's like things are constantly moving a little bit. And if I lay out everything when things are in flux and one landlord thinks he's getting three turbines and he finds out he's getting two, he gets really upset, so. I, it's just really, it saves a lot of people heartburn if you trade it so we know that the layout that we are proposing is, won't be actually built.
I know that feeling, I've been a silvies engineer for thirty, thirty-seven years, I know the exact thing. What do you mean my area is growing? What do you mean my area is shrinking?
Some of these landlords, I know they're relying on this for retirement money, they're making plans to eventually get that. So we don't want to cause any problems for them to make plans and then find out that they're not getting something.
Yeah, Judy made a good point, that is, we represent every person that lives here. Every person.
Refresh my memory, why are we, why is this going to bigger turbines?
So, the, the project itself, basically, we got the approval in September, right? Our original plan was to start construction now, like November or December this year, and be fully operational by the end of next year. And so with our, with our Casadega project, we've seen that the state is taking longer than they had originally showed is what their schedule should be for basically approving those conditions and allowing us to start construction on time. So a lot of their conditions have like a forty-five day time period from the time you submit something for them to review it and give you the answer. We're finding that it's taking much longer than that. So if we just took those timelines and inserted them into our schedule, it would push the end of the project beyond the end of next year. Which, to weigh the whole, it's really annoying, but the really, the, the way this PTC works, the production tax credit, with the, with the federal government, they're decreasing it every year and phasing it out. So every year, they're basically saying you lose twenty percent of the value of the PTC.
And why is that if it's so awful?
What's that?
Why are they taking your money away if it's, if it's a viable?
If it's a viable idea?
Well, it's, it's, so it's an incentive that was in place and they're phasing it out over the course of five years. That's what they're doing, right?
Right.
So every year, they're decreasing it by twenty percent. But you have to, I'm sorry if this is getting too in-depth, but you have to buy your turbines and you have four years to put them in the ground, or else they're worthless from that incentive. So now everyone is buying turbines four years ahead and hoping that they have their project perfectly in place for that year to put them in the project and have them qualify for this credit. So all of a sudden, if we go beyond twenty twenty, go to twenty twenty-one, the turbines that we bought for twenty twenty are no longer applicable, we have to use our twenty twenty-one turbines and it's screwing everything up.
Yeah, but, I mean, they're gonna take the turbines, these clipper ones and repurpose, the repurposable ones.
Right.
I mean, there's value to them, I don't, you know.
Yeah, and it all comes down to.
Is it because every town wants the latest and greatest? I'm not following the, I mean, if I buy a six point zero turbine, it's not a twenty twenty brand model. It's a twenty nineteen and I could still get two point five megawatts out of it.
Right.
And you're already permitted for that.
And I'm already permitted because the planning, yeah.
So what's happening, so I would say people's power prices are artificially low right now.
Can you say that again?
People's power prices are artificially low. In a way, what we're doing is selling power for cheaper. And power is gonna start being more expensive as all this starts changing. So right now, we don't just sell.
Because you have to hammer, hammer.
We usually sign up what call a power purchase agreement. So we, we say, we're gonna sell power for this amount of money for a ten-year period or whatever period we agree, right? Whatever entity it is, the utility, Facebook, you know, a lot of corporates are surrounding these as well.
No doubt.
They want to lock in their power purchase price, we want to lock in what we're gonna sell it at over the course of that time. So they know, okay, you get this incentive, so you're getting a little cheaper there, so we're gonna build that in there. That calculation, this is the price we're gonna offer you. Oh, next year, it goes down twenty percent, so we need to pay you more, so everything's gonna start changing year after year.
So quicker is better in everybody's mind.
It's just all, we all wanted to lock in.
It's a permanent project, it's a fast.
Yeah, you give it permitting, which states they have to be done, I believe, by twenty, by the end of next year, this was the promise.
Is that the proper way isn't making them money?
Properly?
The pro, the permanent, the permanent project is not the best way to go.
It's very, very painful for us to go through this multi-year process with the state of New York and then find out we can't build it anymore because federal incentives are tied to this certain technology and now we have to change. So we tried relaying this information to.
Forever.
It's, it's gonna be like a never-ending.
Yeah.
Job of Chip and me coming to these towns and having to change this because now, now we miss that deadline.
See, I just can't even imagine sleeping.
We won't give you the incentive on the smaller windmills, is that what you're telling me?
It's not that we would have had a buy it four years ago.
Back to my original question, though, what prompted the change from five hundred to six fifty? Why are we making, why do you, why do you want ones that are bigger?
Right, so we lose that twenty percent and that's a big chunk of money for the project. In order to make the project even economic anymore, we have to find a way to increase the economics of the project.
So, in order for your project to be what you need it to be, that's why you want bigger ones? In order to even build the project?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you're not including the megawatts of the project.
This is now the third different reason why, why this is being done.
Yeah.
What do you mean? Originally, when this whole thing came to us, we were told that they had to be bigger because Fremont wasn't on board. Fremont wasn't on board, therefore to make up for the megawattage that you were contracted to make or were gonna have, whatever, you had to have bigger ones. Because Fremont wasn't gonna be on board.
Yeah.
Now Fremont's on board. At the town board specialty hearing meeting that they had, we were told that, oh, they're bigger because we have to clear the treetops.
And there's better wind.
And there's better wind once you clear the trees. And now you're telling me something completely different.
No, it's the same.
No.
No, not according to the way, when I'm here, I'm here, I'm hearing three different versions of why those are being done.
The trees and the, and the increased height and the more wind up there, that's all related, right?
None of these windmills that are now are down below the tree line.
Right.
Yeah.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, if you, if you look at the wind resource on a forested hilly area like this, you have a lot of turbulence. So wind turbines don't like turbulence and that, that causes a decrease in the amount of energy or overall energy.
No, I understand that part, but none of these are in the woods. That would have now.
Okay.
So how is raising, how is raising them above the trees gonna make a difference when you're not around the trees to be in them?
Well, they might be.
No, no, your, your trees three miles away are affecting you at your, at your side.
Well, you might as well make these things a thousand feet, because you're not gonna make any difference from that if you're three miles away and it's affecting the wind.
You know, so, what I'm saying is.
Or you might as well clear all the trees off and then you can do whatever you want to, if it's three miles away, it's a bother.
Projects that try to propose that, they're just gonna cut everything. And we're not, we're not trying to do that, we're trying to keep this exactly with the, with the current way of land and keep everything that's in place, the trees, the farms, everything, keep it the way it is.
Because to me, it just sounds like three different reasons for doing it. That's all I hear, that's all I hear, three different reasons.
It's essentially that we need to go higher in order to increase the amount of wind resource that we're getting from these turbines. And that, that has to do with trees, that has to do with the loss of the PTC value, ultimately, we need to make up for that, okay? And, and if we, if we have turbines that are too low, which we look at every single model of turbines out there, and when we use those low turbines, it just doesn't, it doesn't make enough power in order to make the project happen.
So not only that, you got the incentive that is becoming a problem, correct?
Yeah, the incentive is decreasing every year.
And the windmill now, if you can't, you gotta have six fifties in order to make enough electricity, you know, be efficient enough, right? So you're just saying that there's.
You see our point, I mean, I guess, I understand you got a lot of balls in the air and this affects that, which affects this and it has to come, but it might come after this. The, the most logical planning route to get these things in the ground isn't, can't be followed. That just blows, I don't know if it blows your mind like it does mine, that's just sickening to hear. But, let me draw the reason why. The value side, right?
Well.
I mean, that is.
So, so I can kind of look at it from our perspective a little bit, when there's projects proposed, a lot of companies, I will speak for other companies that have projects in ten states.
You bet.
You know, and so then they're saying, if we can build a project here, well, we're gonna lose five hundred thousand dollars. I've spent all that money. We build a project here, we're gonna make twenty million dollars.
That's right.
So which one are they gonna put their resources towards, are they gonna go somewhere else? And that's what's happening in New York, is a lot of the projects, it's taking so long to get them approved that they're just finding, and they're gonna make more money if they go build in Iowa or Texas.
For Texas, or Idaho, or whatever.
Isn't the other fact that you constantly decrease the megawattage of this project over the years where you keep changing it? Over time, you propose less turbines and lower megawatts. It originally started out as a three hundred some, three hundred seventy megawatt project, and what are you at now? So you're.
What is it now, three seventy-five?
The money just.
So right now, it's gonna be between phase one, between one twenty-five and one fifty-eight.
One twenty-five and one fifty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then they add phase two on?
Phase two, we're looking at another hundred.
Oh.
Right now, our interconnect capacity is like two thirty-five megawatts.
So two thirty-five overall and it's gonna be three hundred overall.
So originally, though, you were proposing three hundred and you couldn't hook up?
Originally, I think we had three hundred in the proposal for the interconnection. We, we were planning on building the layout that we had approved in the Article Ten.
Right.
So we amended our interconnection capacity to match that. Now we can't build that layout, so we kind of, we lost that capacity on the end.
Wow, we lost that capacity, somebody else got it?
Well, in order to get it back, you have to apply and follow this queue process that takes three or four years.
All right, I don't envy you.
No, I mean, it's, there are so many moving pieces, this is just one of them that's running high. And, and as I was, you know, trying to state earlier is that, and this isn't for, I mean, you guys ultimately are making a recommendation of whatever it is.
Yes.
And I get it, like, I'd want to know as well, what are all the environmental impacts? But that's what this Article Ten process is supposed to be for.
It's supposed to be for.
It's supposed to be for all that, to study everything regarding the.
So you're saying trust, trust, trust.
Trust that the state's gonna look out, but it's for our best interest.
You know what's happening now is they've taken away what they give us and making that being done at home rule, you know, lowering the level, here, accept this, accept this, accept this. So I guess the, my confidence level isn't, I don't get a warm fuzzy when I think of Uncle, Uncle.
What is the land?
Mario, yeah, Uncle Mario hugged in, hugged me to sleep at night.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I mean, it would be nicer just to deal with, with the local towns and.
You bet, you bet.
I'm sure you'll need all the requirements, setback, noise and all that stuff, but the visual impact, you know, you know, we won't see the flicker, we won't see, you know, even, even if it meets the thirty hour, that's still the same. You also have the fact that these are a hundred and fifty feet higher, our setbacks haven't changed. So they are, in fact, if they, if they were to go over, unlikely in my opinion, but you're still gonna be closer to a property line. You know, all those things are not gonna be factored in when they, when they do an environmental study. Because all they're looking at is our windmill law. Yeah, that says now six hundred and fifty feet is okay.
Is fine, yeah, no matter what.
But we don't know, you know.
It's one sentence.
What the visual impact is, we don't know, you know. I still have the opinion that I, if I was a town board, I couldn't pass this without knowing what the facts are.
If someone gave me a hundred thousand dollars and told me to buy my neighbor a car, they said, you better not die in this car, I said, fine, I'll. I'm gonna be very cautious how, you know, granted, I got a hundred grand. I'm not gonna go buy any old thing off the lot. I'm really gonna think hard because you can't guide in this thing. And that's kind of where we are here, we're, we're representing people. And someone gave us something and we, and we gotta do it for their best interest.
And the environmental impact study, it talks about all the impacts, but it talks about anticipating less of an impact because there'll be less of it.
Anticipate.
That's, that's, you're filling out a negative declaration, you're signing a negative declaration based on what you anticipate.
Yeah, so, so right now, like I said, there's, there's a few different layouts, things are moving right now. Yeah, but I would say as, as the minimum that we're looking at right now is about ninety megawatts in, in the towns.
A couple of them.
Okay, and I think with the old layout, it's seventy-eight. Okay, so you, you get more megawatts and that, that increases that HCA payment.
Yeah.
The pilot payment. So the HCA payment by itself is gonna be about two hundred twenty-four thousand a year. And the pilot payment, a hundred eighty-seven plus the annual, you know, inflation on that. And the, the biggest winner out of everyone, I think, is the, the way in Coaxton School, gets a very significant sum of money each year.
So money solves everything.
Yeah.
Money does not solve everything, but it's part of, part of the.
It's part of the equation.
It's definitely part of, it's definitely part of the equation.
And so are the two thousand people that we represent.
All part of the incentive.
What's, what's interesting, though, with this change, I get it, they're, they're taller and they will be a little more visible further away. But it is more megawatts for the town, which means more, so you're not getting more turbines.
Right. Right.
You're getting less turbines, but more megawatts, and it ends up paying more money to the town over time too, so it's.
Putting a little salve on the word.
Yeah.
It's still, it's still gonna decrease in our electric.
In fact, it sounds like the cost of the rock.
We sell the power for comparison, somehow it filters through eventually, but it's. I always compare, I always compare the power industry, like, it, the whole transmission system's a big pool. And our plants with the hoses dunking it in and we're all straw sucking it out, and it's really hard to, to make a real difference.
Real debt, yeah.
It takes time, um, you don't know where your power exactly came from, it could've come from that dirty coal plant over there, that nuclear plant over there, or that wind farm there, and it all kind of goes the same.
We've got basically, uh, five years to phase out those incentives, what? Maybe the first year or two projects may still be viable, but after that, nobody's gonna do a project, are they?
They're.
Without that incentive.
People like to say it, but I think you're still, so if you looked at just the pure cost of wind, sorry, we're getting diverging, cost of wind versus cost of coal right now, wind is actually cheaper without the incentives.
Wind is?
Wind is.
Wind is cheaper without the incentive?
Without the incentives. What happens is with the utilities or the people that are buying the power, they're expecting to pay a certain cost, and so that's, that's what drives us.
So you're aiming, you're aiming here, back here.
Yeah.
And you're aiming for the thing that they expect.
Yeah.
And doing all this hocus pocus and getting it to be the most efficient.
So we don't have that, that benchmark to see what the exact power price is right now of, of coal.
So you're talking about a project not being economically viable and only using one year of incentive, so. Are you telling me that people with no incentive would still do a project?
I'm saying that the market will adjust over time.
Can I just point out that we just sat through a lot of meetings? And the fifty turbines that we have now, which are four hundred twenty feet tall, obviously are making money for the company, or they would not be doing the
Reheading.
redoing of the turbines that they're doing now, and they're still staying under the five hundred feet. And there's fifty of them, and obviously, they would not be doing it at the cost of each replacement.
And they're looking for the same two brands that you.
Right, and they're gonna lose the PTCs and everything else the exact same way. And obviously, it's still very profitable, and they would not be doing that.
Yeah, I cannot speak to their economics, but keeping the same tower, keeping the same foundation, keeping the same roads, the collection system.
No, saving.
There's a lot of money right there.
Sure, there's incentive involved in that project too.
I, I don't know, I think so, but I don't know how, I've never been involved with a re-power product, those are pretty new. So I don't know.
They have, they have impressed the crap out of us with what they put forward and what they, how they addressed it and things that we that bothered us.
Yeah.
Um, blew my mind again, maybe I'm easily impressed.
Well, it sounded like their older turbines were older technology can replace the whole of this, this newer thing. Even a better thing for them, for you guys, for everyone.
They put a lot of money into, to proving
Yeah.
what they're, what they're gonna do for us. Do you guys have questions, concerns? I know three of us, four of us have spoken a ton, I don't wanna leave anybody out. What's on your mind?
Did you talk about, you said nineteen and now it's the last.
Double check, I think it's.
But what are we talking, three, four, down to fifteen, or are we only talking?
I think, I think nineteen is the current count.
What was the other count?
I think it was twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
I believe, but I don't. Please don't quote me on those numbers. I wrote these down in here, so I really don't care about the quantity. Quantity might be not too. The reasoning behind it.
Everything's changing, it's constant too, so it's, uh. My opinion, you're a three hundred reason.
Well, yeah, I think, I think they're all part of the equation, I don't think it's a linear equation, I think it's one changes, something else takes its place in the equation, just. So I think there are three reasons.
I don't doubt that they are, it's, I think what bothers him was the, when they first came to me, they talked about being unsure about Fremont and needing to, to boost the size in order to keep the megawattage for the project.
That's Fremont.
That was the reason that was given to me, that was the only reason.
That's the only reason. That, that is a reason.
Yeah.
And I can go, I can go deep.
Town board meeting, it was, the reason given was the fact that they were bigger windmills, more efficient. And now you're explaining, you know, the incentive side of it and and the economic viability and all that, so, I mean, we've heard three different stories, you know.
Yeah, it's not, it's not just one thing, it, so going to that project size, you know, we do have, um, a contract for our, what's called our REX. REX are, so when you, you generate renewable electricity, you get a rec for each megawatt hour of that unit of electricity. So we sell those to, um, an entity in New York. And we guarantee that we'll sell a certain amount. The decrease in the project size basically means that we're not gonna meet that minimum amount. So what does that mean? That means the entity that we've signed the contract with can say you're, you're in default and we cancel. Or it could mean that entity sees no projects are getting approved in New York, and we should take whatever we can get, let's find out a solution that works. So we are like, let's make this project as big as possible, even though we know that Fremont's gonna take too long to do all this. So let's just figure out the maximum size we can still build on the land that we have available and the three towns that have been fairly supportive. So that, that's what we've done there, and that's, that's another, you know, reason, but it's not like the reason, there's multiple.
They're all, they are all the reasons, they just happen to each grow and shrink and.
Everything is moving.
So you're saying now Fremont's not getting any turbines?
What we're, what we're, I'm sure you'll communicate this, and I, I would, I'm planning to talk to Fremont about it on Tuesday. Um, but basically, we are looking at postponing construction in Fremont. So right now Fremont's out. Right now, we, we don't, we would like, we would like to build in Fremont, but right now, we, we can't make it. Then we can't, we know that their process will take, um, long, and we don't have a, uh, even right now, by, just to complete this project by the end of twenty twenty-one, our, our timeline is, is short. Cause they stay longer in New York for getting the approvals with the state.
For many reasons.
You're accurate, see, it's twenty minutes. So we, we still are committed to Fremont, we'd like to build, um, there, uh, but we have to work with them on, on figuring out a way to make it work. Um, for the time being, we're, we're looking at building the other towns.
Well, our defense, I gotta say, this is third, second windmill project, third project to do with windmills, and there hasn't been one of them yet. It wasn't under the gun, hurry up, make a decision fast. Doesn't matter one that wasn't that way, under a deadline that it's impossible to meet. You know, I, I, it's just amazing to me that you expect towns to, to make decisions and, and you know, informed decisions, and yet every one of them is under, under the gun to hurry up and get it done.
Yeah, but that's the, the economy, can you, can you blame those towns?
No, I know why, I know why it happens, and, and we've done our best, I mean, we made, we've made the two that we've dealt with happen under those very same circumstances.
Under those circumstances.
Even though I have seen hard deadlines blow right past and not have any issues.
And nobody was crying in their.
Didn't hurt a thing, you know, and, and we didn't have to make a rush decision.
Yes, see that. That adds, that's, that experience adds a complexity to our decision to, we, we remember their dead, hard deadlines, I like that word, blew right by.
You're convincing, I mean, it's, it's easy to believe, it's easy to believe you, but, you know, I.
What?
As a planning board, I feel like we still have to do our job and not be caught up in the economics and skip the our responsibilities.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're not asking for that, we're, I mean, we, we are still expecting this process to be a very thorough process with New York State. And review all of the environmental impacts, the noise impacts, the shadow of the, everything is still gonna be thoroughly vetted with D E C, with, with D P S. And we're not asking for any, you know, just give us a free pass on that, that's still gonna happen. We have to redo everything that we've improved, these giant documents, we have to redo all of that for, for changing the turbine. Um, and, and I, I think you mentioned earlier, you know, why can't you use the, the turbines, you know, that you, you had for, for twenty, well, twenty twenty-one, basically our safe, they're called safe harbor, but the turbines that are qualifying for the PTC, for if we build in twenty twenty-one, they're getting from G E, um, they're not selling those turbines anymore. So we, we bought these, they're sitting in a warehouse somewhere, and, and they're, they're already old technology.
They're already owned.
So we can't just go match that same turbine and build the rest of them the same.
How many did you buy? Eleven? You bought eleven?
Yeah.
Why?
Well, they're expensive.
Why did you buy eleven, I mean, that wasn't, was that part of the?
I don't know, that would've been, that was twenty seventeen when we made that purchase, they're guessing how many projects are gonna take these, they're extremely expensive, so.
There must be some sort of dip in your toe in the water.
Wonder where that number came from, though, you know what I mean, it doesn't fit any project.
Financial guys, uh, calculate.
Let's just buy eleven of them to get started, I mean.
We can, somebody came up with, pulled out of the hat, I mean, yeah, they have developments, they estimate how many they're gonna need and, and and they guess some of the projects aren't gonna go forward.
Are they left over from some other project or something, did you have more, and then they got used in other projects and this is what's left?
I, I don't think so, I think we've had, we bought these, I, they didn't know which project they were gonna go to.
Sure.
They're looking at anything here.
Just like the attic, the attic stock.
They did tell us though that they still may use some sort, are they talking about those eleven, they may plug them in in a few places, is that what they mean when they say they may still use some smaller ones?
The smaller ones, so the smaller ones that we had in twenty sixteen and the smaller ones we have in twenty seventeen are, are almost the same size, like there's three meter difference or something like that in the size. So, uh, we are now talking with folks, external consultants and stuff, to see if there's a way that we can still use.
Implement them, right?
This is all, you know, tax law stuff that, um, we're trying to see, but it's.
Not every turbine on this project is gonna be at
What's that?
The elevated, not every turbine on this project is gonna be at the elevated six fifty number.
Seven, seven or eight small ones and twenty-five or twenty-six.
There you go, right?
So are, are those seven or eight the ones that you already had?
It could, yes, I suppose so.
And we're, we're still figuring out if they're the ones that we bought in twenty sixteen or the ones in twenty seventeen.
So it's amazing to me that the review process, when it got finished and you already knew that you couldn't get the windmills. Is that?
I can tell.
So it just got approved?
It got approved in September.
September, and you're telling me that now you can't even buy the right sized windmills?
The, the same size that we already.
That you can't permit it.
Um, yeah, I've had conversations with G E, starting in August, so that was probably a month before we got approved. We, we realized with, with Casa Vega that things were taking long, so we, there might be a delay to construction. Um, so, yeah, my, my conversation with the turbine vendors have been, you know, starting in August, just to look at what's available, what's out there. What, what are you gonna have available next year, what are you gonna have available a year for that?
Is it the timeframe that's the issue? You can still get them with the timeframe, or are they not making?
Phasing them out?
They're quitting them.
And yet this project just got approved.
We bought those turbines hours ago.
Yeah, but you got a project approved for way more than that.
Buy it, it's already obsolete.
Eleven that you had.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, you had a project approved for thirty-three?
Oh, yeah, so, so our old, our old layout had the, the Nordex N one seventeen machines, they were a bigger machine too. Not as big as, as these, but, um, we still have the two turbine concept, a bigger one and a smaller one.
So you could still get those?
Uh, they, I honestly, I don't know, they, 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 they're not as much of a American company, they're more of a, a European, they're a German company, but their, their business in the States has just not been as, um, they, they just haven't been as present. So the other vendors are much more established in the States, so we were getting much straighter answers with, with other vendors.
And it could go that far, you know, and you know, sooner you approve it's not, and it's not.
It's super frustrating.
Oh, it must, it must be.
And, and these turbine vendors don't understand it, and New York is sort of an anomaly with, with the rest of the country, as far as how long things take. They ask me, why am I, why am I calling them all in a hurry about twenty twenty-one right now? You know, they got vendors that are, they're trying to deliver projects right now for this year, for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
They don't understand New York.
And I'm saying, well, we got a permit process, I'm trying to design everything, you know, nine months before we start construction. That's way earlier than you would do in other places.
You got more questions, Jerry?
I'm just taking the long one.
I filled up, man, I'm overflowing.
So it doesn't go every time? Yeah. You decide you have and you don't know.
Is there anything burning on your plate there that you wanna get out?
And dry until anyway.
Okay, Dave?
That's what I'm gonna say.
Ted?
What, what's the town board want, expect from us? What do they expect? Alright, so, so the.
A recommendation.
They sent it to us.
A, a thumbs up or a thumbs down, I think.
Based on what?
Do you hear that?
They want our comments, I don't, it's a recommendation, a comment, I don't know that, that our decision is gonna necessarily change, you know, bind them to anything?
Let me, let me refer to the whereas, whereas pursuant to the town zoning law, the town board had heard the proposed law in the E A F to the town planning board for a report and did not receive any comments on the proposed law, or at least thirty days have passed since the law was referred. But this is, was gonna be approved already, was gonna be approved on the seventeenth, so.
They never refer, but they're, you know, they, they want our recommendation, our opinion, our comments on, on the amendment and the seeker.
So you're saying that that has to be changed, is there some correct?
That was that last month's meeting.
Right, if.
That was gonna be right into the minutes.
If last month's hearing.
Yeah, it wasn't referred to us.
So I, that needs to be part of our call back, our holler back, right?
I think it's irrelevant now because they've now referred it to us, in my opinion.
This.
How this is.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that any of this, they're gonna make a decision on the seeker. They're gonna make a decision on the amendment. They want our, our comments on, you know, what we would change. You know, do we have comments on the seeker, do we have comments on the amendment, what would we change? You know, and, and what's our opinion on, you know, so, yeah, they're looking for recommendations.
So there's your what we think we are to give them.
So I don't know, you know, what you're gonna propose to vote on or.
No, that's what I was asking everybody for.
Procedure for giving those comments are, you know, I mean, I don't know if it's a voted thing or.
That's all I was planning on saying was, uh, or some comments are. And again, I'm just talking through, thinking through all in my head here, why wasn't the variance route followed? As it was a, a first step? And why wasn't it tried? That would be a question that we.
Could be a comment.
Could be a comment, you know.
Do we just list their comments?
Yeah, that's what I, that's how I would, in no certain order.
You can do it any way you want. I mean, that's not like we're making a decision, you know, you can do both, you can make them both work.
Yeah, I made comments to myself that are pluses and minuses, that are facts and oh, let's ask about this, sort of a.
Do you wanna just take down the, the little comments from the board on what we have to review, I mean.
Just so long as, if one of us says one, it's not like, oh, my God, I'm not gonna put my name on that. Yeah, you, you know, so that we believe what we, what we as a board say.
Or do you feel like it, it all has to be a, you know, a, a voted recommendation, is this, you know, I mean, can we just give them our comments?
I would just give them our comments.
Alright, well, if you want, or just write down what.
Sure.
And if you want to, I mean, if you wanna accept anybody's comment from the board, I mean, you can put my name on my comment.
No, I don't think that's necessary, I I we speak as a board. Right?
Depends on whether everybody agrees, maybe Jeremy doesn't agree with it.
Yeah, exactly, I don't wanna, that's right.
You know?
That's right, I don't wanna.
Put more of that pressure on, sure.
So it feels different, you know, that's why, if you vote, you know what I mean, then it's, if it, if you, if you were to say.
So we're gonna vote on, so we make.
If you were to say I propose a vote on approving, you know, this amendment, you know, as has our approval. And you call a vote and it gets voted down, then the town, then the planning board doesn't approve of it.
And and that's one answer.
That's one way.
But it's not a.
At that point, it depends on how you word the, you know, how you word what we vote on.
I mean, I'm hearing the same type of questions from everybody. They're not. They're not, um. No, there's, there's a bit of trepidation with every, every question asked tonight. Is that the mood?
She's got a lot of questions on how the little process is played out. I don't think that's. You know, aside from going to the the town board meeting and and raising those concerns ourselves. I don't think it's something that we necessarily have any.
No.
Any, we can't weigh in on it as a planning board.
But we have some historical. Experience. With how it worked two other times, right?
Yeah, my opinion is.
Yeah.
The place for that would be at the town board meeting, you know, to raise those.
Raise those.
Those issues, you know, I think we. My opinion is we should stick to what they asked us for, and that was. Comments on the amendment and the and the secret, what was referred to us.
Right. Again, that's in our scope, that's in the planning board's scope.
And my comment is, you know. I, I think they need to have the, all the data, all the studies in front of them.
Yep.
Before they should make a decision on.
You wanna note these, Judy?
I'm trying.
Okay.
I'm writing down things.
Okay, um.
My recommendation is that they should see the studies before they approve this amendment.
Just environmental or road use?
Both, well, no, the the seeker.
I mean, I heard, I.
The seeker and the amendment.
The seeker and the amendment.
I think they, it's all, it's all, it's uh.
Conjecture.
There's no, there's no. Studies to go with this environment, this negative declaration.
And again, we're, I. Yeah.
And the opinion that I had gotten in the past from Lovella on the subject, you know, not an official opinion, was that. You know, they, that the town should see the studies before they approved.
Sure.
A negative declaration on on the secret for this amendment. And I I agree.
Well.
So Mike, they sent you those couple of points there, basically, that's what she was saying.
I mean, we may can and they were go through hoops just for, just for a special use permit, just for thirty feet.
We were making that decision. We were doing the study and 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 that was on an actual project, this theoretically is on a law, but it has everything to do with the project.
Yeah, it has everything to do with the project, well, the project's name is written all over this stuff.
Begins, it starts the engine to the project.
It starts the engine for the loss of two.
I have one thing, I I think the the Canada project is not doing the whole process, they're just working with you guys, right? So that that's a difference there, we created this massive process to follow, and all the studies.
We were doing.
Okay, so they did, with, with the.
We had.
Great, yeah, there was a whole environmental.
We had to do that.
Right, that whole thing.
Okay, so more studies. You know, again, if we say something that someone disagrees with or has. You know. Just so you English would say it.
I mean, they, they say that the, that the study, the law has to be amended before they'll do the study, and I I feel like you got the cart before the horse.
It feels that way to me, but I don't have the experience that you have.
Reality may not bear that out, though.
I understand.
Well, how was it done the first time around?
Um.
Yeah, we got windmill law before they had their project approved.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what I said.
So the studies come out after the law was made?
My gut has said this the whole time, is we're the guinea, not, I don't wanna guinea pig, we're serial number one in New York State.
Again, again.
And I don't know, I don't know if I can.
These were the end all be all turbines, they were the latest technology, oops.
And I don't know if I could subject people to that kinda. Nobody wants the first model, right? Or the first using, I know it's not the first model, I know these things are proven, I know these things are used.
Yeah, for offshore.
And I know they're coming from, if I believe what you say, there's gonna be more all around us, right? But. I'm a conservative dude, man, I can't, I can't grab hold of that. That's why I'm gonna die poor.
Well, Todd Hill was the, one of the first projects in New York State to have have this more ridge, right?
Yes, sir.
To have them, and what have they done, or do they have new, bigger, more improved everything up there?
I've read, um, again, I'm subject to just a blip, a snapshot of what I read, you know, I don't know that I did it all. But they're, they're loving what they got.
Cause I've been up there, you know, I've seen them, you know, I've, I've slept on, I slept on each one, just just for kicks and giggles, you know.
Two.
And and there is a lot of wind towers up there, but uh, uh, I was just wondering had they, you know, up the ante.
Their website doesn't speak of 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 renovating or changing.
Mm-hmm.
I, that's all I know is that snapshot that I saw. So, not, not wanting to be serial number one, not wanting to be.
Okay.
The guinea pig.
Hate that word.
That's applicable.
I mean, yeah. They're nicer words.
No, it's just be right up front. Got one of those.
Okay.
I had a hamster once and he like, when I moved the barn and rolled around, I also had a guinea pig. You didn't care.
I got bit by my hamster. Just shows you what I'm all about.
Yeah. It wasn't my choice to have it.
I had to change my nature in college.
Did you have to change?
It wasn't my choice for a hamster, that was.
From psychology, cause we had to train rats and the rat was so disgusting and it bit me and I said, I can't do this.
I can't do the rest of my life.
Courses required, so I said, mm, mm-mm.
Yep.
I'm a social worker, I said.
I'm work.
Alright, do we have a majority, does the majority of us feel like they need to do more to do the studies first or not? What do you think, Jerry?
I think so. How do you, how do you put a law out there with no, nothing behind it? Yeah.
But Ray, didn't you just say that the law, the original wind law was drawn and approved? Before the the Canada power partners had to go and do all of their studies? So why is this different?
It was based on other windmill laws and they had operating projects. And to be honest with you, I don't remember what the, if there was a secret on the law.
There was a secret, yes. I mean, they're still, they're still going to have to do all the studies, but they can't do the studies until, oh, you know, there's a reason to do the studies.
Well, the reason they have to study is you're jacking. Yeah, yeah, there's a ton of literature related to.
Yeah.
Just increasing hype reference.
That's.
So, I mean, they're, they're, they're different environmental impacts. So on the last pages.
Right.
There, there is literature, so it's not project specific, but this law is supposed to be.
Again, you know, we get, we get the information today. And they have, we have to make a recommendation without, now, I would like to go back and look at the environmental studies that we did on our original windmill law. You know, we don't have time to do that.
That's informed.
They didn't give us time to do that.
That's an informed decision.
You wanna make their decision on, on their, at their meeting, immediately following ours, and and so. You know, I.
Yeah.
I would love to go see exactly what was in that, what was, you know, what the studies looked like in ten years, Bill.
The extra one there.
I was going through my Facebook, is it one of them? Showing guys.
Oh, sure, you're looking at Facebook.
No, cause Chip said, yeah, no, um.
No goofing on the meeting.
No blades have ever gone through any way these have, but they're actually, it is the case.
Have they had a blade come off of?
Probably a tornado.
Have they had a blade come off of a windmill?
A blade?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's got to be a tornado, not like, not that it'll like flying away, it's usually just a ball right down. But sometimes they'll break, yeah.
Yeah, they'll get, they'll break in half or a tip breaks off or something.
Somebody's playing for too long.
Yeah, so, I don't know.
And my other thing is, you brought up two thousand people in the community, and you're also saying that we're gonna make them two thousand people live by the state minimum. You know, the state minimum of flicker, the state minimum on noise. I mean, that's a decision that we have, you have to make, you know?
Yeah.
You know, do you wanna live on minimums?
I think that's where we're at now.
You know, so without going back and relooking at some of this stuff, you can't make a sound decision on it.
If you're going up a hundred fifty feet, you have to look at setbacks. At at least to the residences.
You might wanna consider that, you might wanna consider, you know.
Position?
The. You know, you might wanna consider all that stuff.
Orientation, I know, these heads rotate.
Yeah, they go around seven or twenty degrees.
Right. Seven twenty?
Yeah.
They go around twice like an hour?
They go around twice, then they, they know they've gone around, then they reset and they go back, cause the cables can get twisted.
Gotcha.
See why the spring of it is.
Yeah.
Be kinda cool to see, actually. I've never seen that. Kinda cool, why is it spring?
Too many uses for a different type of connection.
That's the next gen for.
Oh, right.
The contact.
Yeah, that's, yeah, probably.
Fred, do you think we got enough information to give a thumbs up to the board, town board?
I don't think you gotta give them a thumbs up with them, no, you just give them a recommended, you know.
Right.
What your concerns are, you know.
But the mood.
They're gonna do what they want anyways.
Well, then I know. The timber, what we send them, has to reflect, should reflect. What, what, what we're talking about, like.
Well, there are.
I think a little more information would be nice.
Numerous misstatements raised in this document that. They've sent, which they've already prepared and they didn't know what was gonna happen here, why would you refer here if you obviously didn't care what was said?
So maybe that's, that's, that's a very good concern, is we don't believe the language and, or the verbiage, I should say, we don't believe the verbiage of the.
In the law that they're gonna file?
Well, this is the res, the secret resolution, but where I just write the whereas, it says we've had all this stuff for thirty days to look at.
Yeah.
We had it for thirty minutes.
There are numerous misstatements, uh, in today's lingo, as of December fifth. Misstatements in the law.
Well, plus they spell town, huh?
Tom?
Yeah. They got tow, they got told, they forget then.
Numerous mistake, mistake, mix.
Misstatement, so we're in the amendment.
The amendment, okay.
Last meeting, well, when they hadn't even done this, yeah.
This is the, yeah. So I would assume that this isn't what, how it's gonna read, because I have our comments, right? I would hope it had her.
Well, that's just it, I don't, you know better than I if this is just boiler, boilerplate or if this is the letter of law.
This would need to be updated, right?
Right. So. This would have to be updated, misstatements, therefore this would need to be up, the amendment would need to be updated.
Okay.
The resolution for the secret negative declaration.
Okay, therefore the resolution needs to be updated or the? What needs to be updated, the amendment?
The resolu- resolution.
Okay.
For the secret negative declaration.
And, and the amendment, right?
The amendment itself.
It's a, um. I thought I.
The local law filing amendment?
The local law filing.
That needs to be updated also? There was one there, I handed out, I don't know if you got a copy, there's, might be some more floating around. I can make more copies.
Amendment to locally.
I said the future one goes here on the corner.
It's a lot of paper.
One starting off with local law filing.
So what was it that was wrong with that?
Uh. I thought it had a spot, um.
Because they mentioned.
I thought it mentioned there, but I'm not positive of that.
Yeah, it wasn't any environmental thing.
I don't, I do not see that, man.
The other problem is they have to have a hearing on the secret.
So that's a, that's a valid fact. And that's the ten day or thirty day? How many?
Ten day notice? What's it, how, how is that meeting advertised, are they having a hearing on?
That was a, the public hearing was on the law, not on the, the public hearing we had last.
It wasn't, it wasn't an official.
It wasn't an official meeting, no.
It wasn't an official hearing.
Official hearing.
At their last meeting. Right?
The hearing was, yeah, the hearing, the hearing wasn't a hearing, yeah.
It was a practice.
It was, part of the hearing was extended on.
It was a continuing.
Something about the law that went along there is like, okay, we can sit down and say yes or no, but according to the chain of command, it has to go to the planning board and then come back.
And come back. So what, what we learned?
All this law is, that you're trying, that they're trying to get in, is just puts in the. The, the town would accept. Six hundred foot turbines if they meet all the qualifications. And like the setbacks, if they've already, they've already been approved for one that's four hundred and some feet, and you've got the setbacks, well, as soon as you go up, the setbacks gotta be changed. Well, if them setbacks come too close to the other guy's property line and he don't want it, that turbine's gone, it can't go there.
Well, the height of the windmill doesn't change the setback.
Although it's one of the highest ones.
Tip height, it shoots, yeah.
Whatever, it should. Yeah. Then there's a blade.
Well, I mean, the setback is still fifteen hundred feet from, from a.
With the placement, you must say the placement.
The placement. The placement. It's still, it's still gotta be, because there's ones that they're redoing up here, and I can tell you one right there, Julie Graham's. That is too close because of the other forty feet, and if she don't sign it, she's gonna be staying there with a clipper one until the time runs out because.
Yeah, they'll use parts.
The setback, they got like seven of them, they're too close.
Yeah, they can scuff, scuff something through.
And as far as it goes here, I mean, my opinion on this is like. Well, you gotta have a study on the thing on what you're doing. But why you spend a million dollars on a study and then find out that, no, the town won't allow it? That is like with Ray, he bought a house over here, all in good faith, and then he found out a lot too small to build on. Now he's gotta jump through hoops or whatever to change it.
Well, it's definitely the, the balancing point is, you know, are are you okay with the? With the six hundred and fifty foot tower as long as, as long as it meets the, the sound and the.
Yeah, meets all the qualifications.
But it doesn't mean that it won't be different.
Won't be what?
You, you, you'll, they'll meet the sound requirement in the property line. They'll meet the setback requirement, they'll get a signature, you know? But it doesn't mean that it won't be different. Because like I said, the, the towers are a hundred and fifty feet taller, they can still be fifteen hundred feet from the property line, but they're a hundred and fifty feet taller. Because like I said, the, the towers are a hundred and fifty feet taller, they can still be fifteen hundred feet from the property line, but they're a hundred and fifty feet taller. Visual impact can be different, you know, things can be different, even though it meets the sound and the, it can be different.
It can be different, but it's what, one, one half time, is it?
But you don't know.
It's gonna change, it's gonna change with the height, and the height's going.
If the blade's a hundred and fifty feet, that means it's a hundred and feet closer to my property line.
Right.
Now, I'm not talking from the tower, I'm talking.
Yeah, right, okay.
Because the, the blades is part of the wind turbine, so it's a hundred and fifty feet closer to my property line.
So they wouldn't be able to put one there?
Not without moving it.
Not without moving it for the other guy on the other side.
Well, you know, and they, they crammed them in as close as they could, you know, uh.
You're still comparing two different projects.
Correct, yeah.
So you can't, you're, and you're, and two different processes, you gotta remember that this one is under Article Ten, the other one was under a lead agency as the planning board. It's apples and oranges, I mean, it's the same, it's turbines, but it's still, the techniques and everything else of getting this together are two different projects.
Two different projects.
And at that town board meeting, you know, that was just happening, the people in there, I don't think that there was a half a dozen that spoke about Baron Winds, they were all talking about candidate with power partners. You gotta focus on this project.
You don't even realize they're two projects, you know?
Why do you? And all we're talking about is six hundred and fifty foot tower fifteen hundred feet from your, versus the five hundred, or four hundred and twenty foot, or five hundred foot tower fifteen hundred feet from your wall.
That's why they gotta take the blades into consideration.
You know, there, there is a difference.
Yeah, yeah.
There is a difference.
Most people were talking about shadow flicker that they get from four hundred twenty feet turbines that they find hard to work with. So, six hundred and fifty feet are gonna cause a lot more shadow flicker, which we all know, it's not pleasant.
I think they, you know, they, they still have to follow the.
Stay outward.
You know, I think, you're signing on for that, that's what, that's what this one's under too.
Yeah, you wanna live by the state minimum.
That's, that's the way it is, you know, you know?
See, and I listen to.
You want everybody out there driving around with point oh one four, the state minimum.
You're taking.
Well, these, these, these limits aren't set by the state, like, across the board, they're set on individual project basis, based on the comments that come from the towns and the laws.
Thirty hours of flicker per.
Yeah, it's, it's not like every project gets that, it's that they look at that individual project with the town laws in place, with the comments that they get back from.
How do you look at the project when you don't know what kind of windmill you're gonna have?
We didn't set that thirty hours.
We would state something, if we have multiple wind turbines, we'd state the worst case one, because we know that we're gonna have to follow what recommendation they give, so we don't wanna screw ourselves by putting that something in place that we know we're gonna exceed.
So who's making the recommendation on what flicker is, how many hours?
Well, flicker is just tied to the ro- RPMs and the rotor diodes, that's not really changing that much from turbine to turbine.
Well, what they were talking about on the project that we have was over thirty hours per year or something.
Something.
Something, it had to do with thirty something.
Right, thirty hours.
That's a state standard or some industry standard.
What I'm saying is the state does set that, but it's not like they have a law that says all projects will meet that. It's that they looked at this project, they looked at all the residences, they looked at all the comments, they looked at the local laws, and then they, they put that project requirement.
On the existing one.
And they put that project requirement on, on our conditions, so that, that's.
So they put the same line you guys?
Yeah. Yeah, and so if we, and, and flicker is something that isn't very straightforward, because it's cloudy, you know, it's like, so it's all a prediction.
It's cloudy, it's seven o'clock at night on a, on a midsummer evening, I mean, I can see why the number is so low, the chances of, correct me if I'm wrong, the chances of flicker being a problem, like that guy said he puked or whatever, is thirty hours out of twenty nine thousand hours.
Yeah.
Uh, the number is so low, I can't believe it receives this much press.
And it's not in our interest.
It's my gut, if I'm wrong, tell me.
We wanna minimize.
You'd be wrong if you were experiencing it.
Well, yeah, if I ever got bit by a rattlesnake, if I experienced it, I'd say we oughta wear rattlesnake boots, but jeez Louise, the chances of me getting bit by a rattlesnake at twenty six Park Avenue Slims, I'm gonna wear sandals. So I, I, I think it gets too much press for the, for the real. The impact.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm, I, again, if I'm wrong, tell me, um.
I know I can't stand going down the road, man, the sun flicker into the trees and.
Yeah.
It's a much higher RPM than, than what you're talking about for.
I don't like to get in car accidents, so I try to avoid them, so I don't drive down the road, shit, man, life.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I'm done prophes- prophesying here.
So how, what form you wanna do in your.
So we have three right now, um.
Another concern I think we need to address on the environmental forum is very specific for the project.
For being a.
You mean is or isn't?
It is, it's, on the forum, it talks about being for Baron Wind, what you already, what.
Well, it is, yeah.
I'm talking, I'm talking, all changes.
Can change the law.
You can't amend the law for, to be project specific.
But that's on, this is project specific, the secret.
No, the secret form is for, is for the law.
This is for the law, which affects the town.
Oh, I'm sorry for.
Yeah.
Not.
I'm sorry, I thought the secret was for the project, this is tied to the project.
Only tied to the law.
Only tied to the law.
Passing this amendment.
Is amending the law.
So, how is, state that again, then?
It, it's stated in the forums at, you know, on several pages, that it's project specific, and it can't be project specific. So the forum's already faulty because it's, and being stated.
So along with misstatements, there's project, uh.
It's filled out incorrectly, basically.
Focuses that need to be taken out.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Can't be project specific.
You gotta focus on the law and then.
Okay, I'm sorry for.
The reasons supporting the determination in part three also, you know, it doesn't, I don't think it says Baron Wind, but. It's part three, but the reason supporting the determination.
What, and the first page of it?
It's windmill project specific, it's not, doesn't say Baron Wind.
Number of forms.
But it says, the number of red flashing lights required by the Federal Aviation Administration as part of the facility's lighting plan will be reduced by installation of fewer turbines.
Well, that's pretty project specific.
That's, you know, you're, you're, you're basing your determination on a project, uh.
But they did say that technology's.
Even if it was fictitious, that's the, that's the reason for determination.
They did say the technology's changing, where they wouldn't flash all, all day, all the ti- all night, all the time, they're basing it on the, the air traffic. So I mean, that's, I don't care what brand you buy, that's happening.
I don't know, maybe it's okay, I don't know.
I'm, I'm not being a devil's advocate, I'm just trying to be that.
Maybe it's okay for, you know, basing your determination on this amendment. Uh, uh, generic project, while we have one in the process, it's okay, I don't know.
Don't say that.
Like, as if their lawyers think it is, we wouldn't have it if it was.
Once again, that I'll bring up, there is no way that the town board prepared this or did any of this research, because Chip came to October town board meeting, budget meeting, and said, we need you to change a lot of six hundred and fifty feet, you guys were there last month for the hearing and the rest, there have been no other meetings. So when was all this done by the town board members?
Kathy Spencer Labella did it, she could do it behind closed doors, of course.
Right, and then give it to them and they could discuss it, sure, but they didn't hire anybody to do that.
Does it matter?
So I don't know, is it legal if the windmill company writes it?
Well, they usually write them anyway, but it has to be discussed and, and the hard work has to be taken, and they're just relying on all this and proving it.
On the, on the candidate, candidate with power partners, the seeker came in and, and you guys all spoke about it, you went down through it and said, ah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you really.
Oh, we had meeting after meetings and.
Yeah, but we were the lead agency, the first time around, we were the lead agency, okay, this is, our first experience with this, I mean, with this Article Ten process, we were the lead agency the first time around, so the buck stopped with us, right here, the planning board, and. So you did doctor us. When we were doing the repowering here, we asked to be the lead agency, and we, you know, nobody objected, so the buck stopped with us, okay?
Right.
So the buck's not stopping with us, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna hold my hands out, because the buck's not stopping with me, okay? I'm just saying, it's a totally different. It's, it's uncharted waters for me, okay, I, so I'm not really.
But this process, it isn't, this is how a law is done across New York State, and it's not being done correctly by our, right now.
The difference is, though, that the town board is handling this, not us.
Not us, no, right, exactly, we have no.
We just have our opinion, you know? It's all it is, is our opinion, they don't have to take it.
If it were me, I mean, we have to split this thing like saying, if it were me.
Well, these are, these are the issues that we found with what we had to review.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, the.
Okay, that's.
Pretty much worded it like that.
We're up to four or five, how many?
Did you have another one, I just, I'm sorry.
Four.
Figure out how to wreck Sudi's town is.
I have my recorder, I got the not wanting to be serial number one, and then about the verbiage in the, um, in that. And something about the studies to go with the negative declaration, I think, and why wasn't the various route followed? Oh, there's all sorts of questions on here.
This is gonna come across very well, we need to do it different.
Need all the data surveys.
I was gonna say, there could be a bunch of statements, and what they, what's it total up to, it doesn't funnel into a point, does it?
No.
So I'm finding, myself finding it difficult to figure out exactly what, you know, we're supposed to do, you know, because.
Yeah, but aren't, aren't we really getting to the point? What recommended to them, what are their, what are their eyes, right?
So then, if we're gonna just give our comments on what we had to review, we need to clear this up, because it sounds like.
It sounds, yeah.
You're trying to write down our rambling about this stuff, so you need to write, you need to give her exactly what you want them to hear for our recommendations, I think, so.
Yeah, be more on point.
You put it in the words that we agree with, and tell her what to say.
Go slow, nope.
Read the first one again.
What, that wanting to be serial number one?
Well, sure, unproven techni- unaware, un, I don't wanna say unproven, because it's proven, unfamiliar technology with.
Not enough information?
Yeah, but what's a good word for info, uh, uh, justification? Trying to.
It's okay, take your time across, from our technology justification.
Two in the morning rolls around, we're on number three.
Keep in mind, twenty minutes from now is my bedtime, I need to get some.
Then we promised Jenna that we're passing her law tonight.
Yeah, right, that's why I told her she was, she wanted to come, I said, oh gee, I, I'd have the heart to tell her, might not even make the, make the table.
Do you guys have to decide this tonight, you have to?
They want our, they wanted our recommendations ahead of their town board meeting, because I believe they still expect to have a hearing and make a decision.
Okay.
That's why I wanted the second for us to be able to babble like this, and then come in on the fifth and be able to go chica, chica, chica.
Right, I know.
Line that unit up.
It didn't go as planned.
But we didn't have the second.
You probably could've did an informal one, just got, got together and pow loud or something, maybe, but.
Well, how to do that, right?
I don't know.
Well, I don't believe so.
Have like a, just go have like a meeting during the week, you know, if you, no, you can't do that.
No.
No, you can't even have three.
I don't even want, yeah, I don't even want a party there.
Okay.
As a planning board, we would never do that.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want.
Make sure that's written in there.
Who said that?
Unfamiliar technology, uh, doesn't, uh, let me see my notes.
Doesn't justify, I don't know.
I think you're gonna.
Yeah, doesn't, doesn't justify changing the law. Unfamiliar technology doesn't justify to us, uh, to change the law. To, no environmental studies have been done to, to date.
To back up their findings, you know?
To back up the seeker, to prove, to, uh, to valid, validate the seeker, no environmental studies have been done to validate the seeker.
You could also, another comment could be about the, the determination of significance of being project specific, I don't know, you guys, you guys feel like that?
Seeker, seeker language is project specific and shouldn't be, spice that up.
I don't know if they'll believe it, it's what I'm saying, Baron Winds, you know?
Seeker form isn't proj- is project specific and shouldn't be, we believe.
Seeker form?
Is that true, do we believe that, ding bang boom?
I think, I believe it.
I believe it.
You can't amend the law if it's project specific.
Well, I don't, I gotta, I just learned that, so I can't jump right here.
I think maybe you just stick to, if we, if we as a majority agree that, that we feel like they should do the, see the, the, uh, studies before they, you know, any kind of, the current negative declaration, you know? Maybe a, a majority of us agree with that, maybe we just stick with that.
Stick with that, and that's sort of the, this other stuff's all window dressing, where that is sort of the bullet point, right?
You know what I mean, and, and that's one, if we are.
I see that, right?
In a majority, I mean, he feels that way, I think he feels that way, I feel that way, I don't know about you.
Yeah, no, I do feel that way.
But she does.
But man, you gotta weigh it all out.
So that would be one, that would be the one recommendation, we feel like they, they need to do the, the studies to back up their negative declaration.
And I don't, who all believes we need to vote, vote, you know?
Do I have to do a roll call vote or anything?
No, I do, I do not, I take a recommendation that, that rules us, which is what we've done.
Well, I think I've always, I've always done it that way, but.
Really?
In which way?
Call for a vote, just to.
Call for a vote?
To verify the majority, because.
Oh, to, okay.
Just to verify the majority.
I see what you're saying, if it's six to four or something, or.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've all, you know, stated that, but it, it's, I don't know if that's.
So how are we gonna say it, that, we're gonna vote, this is our statement?
What's, is that the only comment we're gonna have?
Yes, and that's the board that reads this, and this is window dressing.
Read that out that way, that, you know.
Correct or not correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Call for a vote on the recommendation that the town board do the, you know, have the environmental studies.
Set it down before the, um, making this amendment.
For the difference in height in the windmills before they.
You said. Take that tape back.
I got so much scribbling on my paper, I'm like, I don't know.
Erase everything.
You guys are rambling. You guys are rambling.
We're just gonna vote, they need calls for it. Never mind all the other comments and recommendations.
We're squishing her down.
I, I've gotten some vote for the, I don't know, recommendation for the town board, then I got lost, cause you guys were.
I know, discussing.
Discussing, and then I had, no environmental studies have been done to date to back up the nega, negative declaration, if you wanna. Vote on that, but.
Forget all that.
How did, forget all that, alright, let's go slow and, I mean, I can get it off my.
Here's the points of experience.
Read out what, what we're gonna vote on, and you read it out, but we're gonna vote on.
Don't make it too long.
Recommendation that the town board. Sees the environmental, you know, reviews the environmental.
Studies.
Studies on, on the proposed.
Wait, prior to changing, amending law, windmill law to. Right, that's the, that's what we're after, is to come in here and make it right now.
Yep.
We as a board.
Cross it out, cross it out.
We as a board.
Drink it all, I drink it all. We drink coffee that lead in the day.
I try not to, but it's gonna be a long.
I was gonna buy, uh, I asked Judy if she had a flip chart. I was gonna buy a flip chart, I couldn't find any in the city of Horell, but we could've been doing this all. Big, large shit. But we don't have such amenities in the village of Cohock.
Apparently you're gonna change.
We have a budget.
We do have a budget.
See?
We have a budget.
That's why I have a chart.
Other.
We as a board believe. That environmental studies.
That's amazing cheers.
Additional environmental studies.
Additional.
See if this passes.
As a board.
What do you want in four?
Part two.
Additional.
I have a part two. It's on a different email that I guess. Let me see if it's on the part. It is not in the local law filing paperwork that we have.
Oh, okay.
You give it to her?
No, I have a part two. I have, I have a part two.
Prior to. Thank you, hey, I do wanna. Give you your address, your phone number, I wanna come up and stand underneath that.
Oh, you're welcome to come to my house any time.
Okay.
You go to Judy's house, you walk over the hill, my first house on the left.
I don't, I'm not a hill tourist.
Oh, you can't come to my house, it's.
After part three.
They do not do the road.
I drive a Subaru.
Judy, give me your address.
So what was in the three was two pages of the rest.
Uh, there's a sticky.
Recommend the board read all the draft environment one page studies.
First two pages of part three.
Judy's got copies of them all.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, kind of, kind of.
Staggered together.
To wake up crazy or anything, but, uh. It, it was, it was a fun night, well, it was that fifteen years ago.
Hang under.
Is Russ writing out the, what he wants me to do?
No, he's, uh, gotten distracted.
I know, I know, I know, I know you are.
Sixty eight.
It doesn't at all.
That's okay.
All parts, who talks about this?
I had some coffee.
I don't even know what one, two.
Good night, take care of Steve.
If you have FEAF statements, prior to, and you tell me if this, prior to.
Yeah, there isn't any, tell us your work for.
Or amending local law two. Prior to amendment.
Now, make sure that's right, because this says four.
Oh, one, uh.
What, you can't make?
Yeah, he has the local law number four, on the local law filing.
Thought we'd been saying two all along.
It is, yes, it is.
Where four comes from?
There's four, yeah, well.
Should be local law number two of two thousand.
It says two.
It is two.
The zoning law of the town of Cohock, the New York and local law number two of two thousand six, regulate windmills and windmill facilities.
Of twenty nineteen.
Yeah, there it says four, oh, yeah.
Change the local law number two of two thousand.
Oh, four, of two thousand.
So you're either writing approving local law number four, or approving the amendment to local law number.
Okay, prior to amendment.
So four superseded.
Local law.
Will be the amendment.
Four is the amended law number two.
Two thousand six.
A lot of numbers.
Listen to this, or we.
A plus B.
We as a board believe that additional environmental studies are to be performed to validate. The FEAF statements prior to amending local law. Number two of two thousand six.
Not clear enough. To support the negative declaration. To support the negative declaration, the study should be done to support the negative declaration.
Okay, we believe as a board. That additional environmental studies are to be performed. To support the negative declaration, not develop.
Support a, a, a determination of. Negative declaration or. To support a negative declaration. Environmental assessment.
Negative declaration.
Read what you got with that in there.
We as a board believe that additional environmental studies are to be performed to support a negative declaration. Read that.
Declaration. Who's the resolution, a negative declaration? To support a resolution. To approving secret negative declaration. Change R to shoot.
Was it just environmental?
That's what, that's the.
Don't make me mean.
It's a secret process.
He's screwing on to give you.
Good. I'm like, I don't know, I got, this one talking, that one going.
State environmental quality review act, so. I mean, the secret process has to be completed, so. If you don't like. They have to have a negative declaration, otherwise the, the. Secation received from the.
To.
To support.
Support.
The resolution.
There we go, support the resolution.
Support the resolution approving secret negative declaration. Like it says at the top of it, though. See where it says at the top of there, resolution supporting.
Yep.
Oh my goodness, I should just sit next to him and write with him, I got.
I'm gonna give you the.
I hope so, Russ.
And, and it's printed.
If you can read it.
You can read it, right? My, my printing's good, my cursor.
Okay, good. I got all sorts of scribble on my paper, guys keep changing things.
Negative. Declaration.
If you wanna abbreviate, I can figure it out.
No, can you read it back to me, so I can?
Ask me now. Okay, everybody, trust me. We, as a board, believe that additional environmental studies are performed to support. The resolution approving seeker, secret, negative declaration.
Should we change R to should be?
We believe that. Oh, environmental studies should be performed. Ready again, Jane?
Yeah, I am, try one more time.
Okay, Judy, Jane. We, comma, as a board, comma, believe that additional environmental studies. Should be performed to support the resolution approving secret negative declaration.
Love, clock and plan for.
Yeah, love days.
No, I'm saying, that's a planning board.
Send all gifts to. Schultz Street.
I don't live on Schultz.
Oh, what you live on?
First.
Yeah, what?
Yeah, first.
First, you're right. You're right. Look at you.
Looking for you.
For.
You're coming to church. Should that, should that quiet?
I just found a little lint on my shirt.
And spread Barney. Everybody's.
Yeah, you, you should be a nurture for you.
So.
So.
He's keen to kill her.
Judy, we're gonna have a. Do we need a roll call, or do we need?
I think you should.
Okay.
No, I'm an alternate.
So. Vote, 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 that's five. Okay.
Exactly what, this is, what, exactly what do we say? Again, one more time.
We, as a board. Believe that additional environmental studies should be performed. To support the resolution approving seeker negative declaration.
Amen.
We're all set to walk in the backseat and get everybody clustered.
Dave, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yikes, thank you, Frida?
Oh, I just said yes.
Okay, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Russ?
Yes.
Yes, Ted?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do you have to have anything else after that motion? Okay.
So unless you're gonna open up the floodplain regularly.
No.
No.
No, let's talk about it a little bit.
Can't we just say we're gonna adopt?
Red tablet?
Yeah.
What are you gonna tell Janet?
I know, she was gonna tell us, I know.
No, no, I told her exactly, that we were gonna have, I'll show you the text.
Is she updating anything?
No, nothing gets changed.
But aren't we good with it?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, we're good with it.
Here's the deal. A guy by the name of Brad Chaffey wrote to me, I worked to him and asked him if we can get maps or whatever, he said, you ought to have your official FEMA maps in your. In your town hall. I'm not sure, let me pay for copy anything when you start your town hall, so.
Paper.
I've asked Martha three times today. And maybe you can carry this forward, I, I also created some copies, Tom. Tell me if we got them or don't got them, these certain panels of these FEMA maps. That's the only thing would keep us from.
We can still, we can still adopt it on the condition that we supplement it when we have the map.
It's the same thing, if I don't know, I'm not gonna.
I don't think we're adopting it, we're just passing it forward.
Well, you know what I mean, passing it forward.
Yeah, so the maps really have nothing to do with the prices he's charging you.
Not really, no.
We're just recommending that.
We're recommending that we, that this is done, and off we go.
The thing I sent you with the blank page on front. The blank page, you got that out of there?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Can we give them a clean copy?
Yeah, that's what this is, I cleaned up her copy. As much as I could, some of it was embedded. Um, and what I sent you was it, was the cleaned up copy. So, can we vote on that right now, too? Can we, to carry forward, we recommend that the town board carry forward.
We recommend, we're, we, you're voting to forward it to the town boards for their approval.
Yes.
Town and village board.
Town and village, yeah.
Yeah, I've been meaning to ask that. It pertains, because the village isn't a town, it pertains to them just as well, right?
Cause they need their approval. Nope, it's different, cause the village has their own. But we wrote that to cover the town and the village.
Yeah, we, we written it.
Yeah.
Or she did.
Right, right.
You can still send it to the village board, they can.
Yeah, let's refer it to both.
Okay, okay.
And the village board will go, okay.
You're calling for a vote to forward it to the village and town.
Village and town boards, that's what this next voice.
Okay. Doing a roll call vote again?
Do we need the roll call, or just?
Yes, that does, the zoning needs.
Alrighty.
Say that one more time.
The zoning law requires a lot. Roll call vote.
Oh, it does? Where were you, you were president of the freshman class.
Yep.
Frida?
Yes.
Okay, Jeremy? Russ?
Yes.
And Ted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yay.
It only took us a year, but, uh, thanks to this.
There we go.
Thank you.
Just needed.
Yeah.
This was bad, this was on fire, wasn't it?
So, we're not gonna talk about, so we're not gonna do anything with the, being fine, it's specifically put that secret form in. We're not putting that in there this time, must be?
No, I just, I think.
Are you, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for my pen bag.
Where's the wife?
Looking for his twenty nine cent pen.
Think we gotta bring that up.
At that, be at board meetings, so?
So, Monday night, the ninth, Wayland is having a public hearing at six thirty for, for this, for them. Like the thing that Tom tried to do, I plan to go to that thing.
I got a bowl.
You guys, you got bowls? Okay.
I got auxiliary ready.
When do you plan to go to that thing? Do you plan to go to Wayland's thing?
I'm thinking about.
Six thirty.
Is it six thirty?
Starts at six thirty.
Yeah, you'll agree.
Yeah.
Took, uh, what was his name, skip?
Chuck?
Chip.
He'll probably, I don't know, he's getting. Some pressure not to travel as much. No, no, not gonna come. His board coming.
What else?
Motion to adjourn?
You got any amendments? Frida, you good, babe?
I just wanna get out of here.
Jeez, that's pretty blunt.
Do you want me to sugarcoat it?
I, I wouldn't have expected anything else.
I don't.
Did you get a motion and?
Not yet, for my, I do adjourn. I jatted it.
I'm gonna adjourn.
Holy crap.
Jeez, they're jumping in line this year. So are you good with that, Judy?
I think so, you know, I'll go over it with you for a second. Yeah, good, I knew that, I saw that, so I was gonna get you before you leave.
Are you, are you a voter?
Um, no, not yet, but I can, I can sign, we can. We just gotta have my file. On file, we've been, thank you very much. Thanks Ted. Catch Jeremy too.
Do we just leave the chairs like you're presenting that?
Well, that's the woman that go back.
Go somewhere, we'll figure it out.
What you got?
I got some.
No, take your thing.
Let's do it, Jeremy. I said over to him, they get him. No, that's where it was.
I want it today.
Oh, breathe, I'm gonna, I just brought the breather along.
Exactly.
I took my pen.
Oh, Jeremy.
I did.
Third, caring for the town, the local board.
Be approved, that's just.
That's all you need on that?
That's the last one I sent you. The one and only one I sent you.
Do I have to sign a copy of that, should I?
Yes, yeah, I think so. I would, I got those I'm big on too much information.
I see that, lots of paper.
I didn't mean to make it paper.
I mean to make
So Judy can make a copy of it, oh, thank you, I got it. Are you decorating tomorrow? Yes.
I do, I'm Justin, so I didn't formally met you.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, oh yeah, you're, you're
Same here. Stick it in, it's like
I'll just copy again off of that.
Okay. If you have questions, don't hesitate to call or text or write or go up to Thank you for all your information.
Yeah, anytime if you guys need more
Yep. Okay.
I'm usually at Waylon's, pretty much, chips and bone, my, or hot, like I went to the last block.
See, oh, yeah, four.
Four to see numbers.
What do you mean, like, well, the town
Yeah.
Same with the other
They're all waiting up for your voice, each other, you know, they're completely handed off.
Yeah, she's in Chicago also.
She's Chicago, she's going to sit in Cassidy now. Steph, Steph, they're, she feels bland and she's
You're still gonna be
Born grand.
Oh, and the other girl that you met, that last week, that was Kristen.
Kristen, with the red hair.
Yeah, yeah, she was in our finance group.
Okay.
She doesn't ever That was her reward for
Doing all this, she got to come and see everyone.
I didn't know without
Do you have anything to get something for us to be here?
Yes. Do I have a door, why don't you text me something? I have chips. That's fine, just text me something, I'll pass you Put your last name.
Oh, you're looking at your line. She was wearing
You were saying this I might come back tomorrow, I was gonna go see my mom.
Send to you.
Yes, I helped out, it cares. Is there any in there?
I don't want any, I would just
Oh, it's just candy, yeah.
It's too late for me, I'll, I'll wait.
No, keep your weight. Candy's trying to get rid of it. Yeah, someone like a company sends it to her, I guess
Is it coffee?
It's coffee. It's chocolate.
Oh, that's fine, too. It's time of year.
Take one for the road.
I'll take one for tomorrow morning.
Alright, you have it with your coffee.
Have you guys seen those Lindor truffles?
Lin?
Yeah.
Yeah, Lindor, yeah.
Those are good.
They're Lindor in, in France. We bought those, like they were breath masks, holy crap, did we go through those over there. I still lost thirty calories, um, stick But we ate those things like bugs. It came in bags like that.
My gosh.
Very good.
That's great, dude.
Alright, yep, you too, thanks. Oh dear, I gotta shut this off.